It is 8:30. I am going to call this RPC meeting to order Friday, June 26, 2020. And I'll have Pam call the roll.
I don't see that we have a quorum yet.
Okay.
I have 10 people who have affirmed attendance at this meeting, but the only no was Mr. Goss, and then Anna Olgin and Will Kyles did not respond, but everyone else said they would be here. I only show right now that Dennis Roberts and you are on the call.
Steve Summers as well, sorry.
Okay, there he is. There's Steve.
Yeah, Chuck Smith here.
I'm here. Tammy's here.
Deb Finan.
Yes, okay.
Diane Marlin.
All right.
No video this morning.
Patrick Brown.
All right.
All right, is there anybody else? We're going to do a little reverse here. Katina is here.
Okay.
Is there anybody else who needs to check in as a roll call who has not? Did Pam get me? Tammy Frilling bogus?
Thank you. Okay, so.
Katina Wiltshire.
Do the roll call then.
All right, well.
I'm showing a few people I haven't got on here yet. I want to make sure that I'm correct in my quorum. Okay, we'll start. Joan Dykstra?
Here.
Diane Marlin?
Here.
Katina Wiltshire?
Present.
Anna Olgin? Charles Smith? Tammy Frilling bogus? Stephen Summers?
Present.
Geraldo Rosales? Jim Goss? Dennis Roberts?
Here.
Deb Frank Finan?
Here.
Patrick Brown?
Here.
Will Kyles. We do have a quorum. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Pam. We need a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Steve Summers, so moved.
Chuck Smith, second.
Are there any revisions? Hearing none, are all those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next, we have audience participation. We have a single audit update from Michael Malat from Baker Tilly Virchow Kraus. And good morning, Michael.
Morning, everyone. Thanks for having me again. Give you a quick update and then obviously go over any questions you have. I actually had a phone call with the auditor's office yesterday. We pretty much have weekly or twice-weekly calls to continue and discuss progress. We're currently targeting, our stretch goal right now is 6:30. We've received everything we need to complete our work from the auditor's office at this point. It is now a matter of us getting through it. And it takes time. So we're working through the financial audit aspects and wrapping that up. While we're shooting for 6:30, we also have kind of started the clock on ourselves with some of the procedures we've done where we have to be basically finished by 7:07. So within that window, that's what we're expecting realistically to issue no later than 7:07. Otherwise, we need to redo some work again, which we don't like to do. While we were hoping 6:30 would be it, it's just taking time to get through the work on the financial audit side. It is actually not. They provide everything we need to do the work. It's simply bandwidth on our end to complete the procedures we need to do. For the single audit, our work is complete. Everything we've done, we've evaluated the CIFA and everything that comes from the auditor's office that supports the single audit. Obviously, all the work with RPC has been done ages ago, but nothing needs to be wrapped up there. Really, at this point, it's simply finalizing the reports and issuing, which we can't do till the caffers issued, which, like I said, should be in about a week or so. So since last time we talked, we have made really good progress. They've been providing us what we needed. They've been very responsive and timely from our audit requests. It's allowing us to try to squeeze what is essentially a month-long audit into a couple of weeks, which we've been trying to do, it's just not as fast as we'd all like.
Are there any questions for Michael?
Chair, I've got a question. This is Delitzo.
Yes, go ahead.
Michael, there was communication sent to this board by the county auditor, which implied that the audit itself or the portion that was of great significance to our organization was completed and that there shouldn't be any raise for concern, given that this now has been uploaded and was accessible via the county's website. I think what I'd like to ask and maybe Betty can ask can help me with this is if you could explain to our board essentially what he had communicated to them and what you're sharing with us today that the audit itself would be completed no later than July 7.
So I think provide some clarification and hopefully some further insights as to kind of what the remains and what the auditor was trying to state is that they did upload a draft of the financial statements, made it publicly available. At this point, we do not expect any changes to the numbers or the information being reported, at least nothing substantial. It might be some minor tweaks to the notes here and there. So our focus primarily up to this point had been to focus on items and areas that could impact, result in change in balances that are being reported by the county. We've substantially completed those. There's still some higher level by my partner, and then we have an additional quality control review that does a high-level check on those things. So something could pop where they say, oh, we missed this. I would not expect that. What remains on our end to complete is kind of, there's a lot of additional procedures where we don't anticipate changes, but in accordance with our audit standards, we need to redocumentation, verify and document results, and do a number of other things on our end so that before we can issue a report. That means, for example, we look at personnel files associated with the pension liabilities or post-poned benefits. There's things like that. We structured our work to focus on the numbers first and to make sure that anything that would be likely to change would be correct. And now we're wrapping up. The underlying things where we don't expect the numbers to change, but we still need to complete procedures around underlying data to ensure that it's all accurate and correct. That was unintentionally for the specific purpose of getting those draft reports up and uploaded so people can see where the numbers were at despite the audit not being issued. I think on our end, it also helps, does help expedite the issuance. They were working simultaneously on preparing the report and making sure it was in its most final form possible while we were working on other things so that if we had focused on these numbers later and found changes, it would have further delayed things if we didn't look at and say cash until now. Then there could be a change and it would delay the finalized issuance, and those draft reports wouldn't be as reliable because there is that potential for change. So I think that's where he's getting involved. There's substantial work that has been completed. There's still underlying work on our end that needs to be completed. With that said, I feel pretty confident based upon the reviews I've completed so far and the focus on kind of the higher-risk areas in terms of number change that we should be in a pretty side. It is unlikely that any significant number change would occur at this point.
Chair, one more follow-up question and comment, but just to be clear, I think for our board, that a draft is not what our funding sources are looking for. They're looking for a complete audit.
Correct. The final report is the required. Sometimes the draft is helpful in easing some of the pressure. And that was kind of the intention, is to ease the pressure, to show progress. That's usually a good function of the draft, whether it be for funding sources, for that Emma filing disclosures, and a number of other things. Providing a good, clean, close-to-final draft has been successful before in just easing concerns, showing that, hey, the numbers are there. It's simply a matter of the man-hours, people-hours required to complete the work on our end at this point.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other questions or comments for Michael? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good day.
Next, is there any additional audience participation? Hearing none, let's move on. We have minutes. RPC draft meeting minutes from May 22, 2020. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved by Chuck, second?
Summers, second.
Second. Any discussion or changes? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the consolidated financial reports, and I'll let Betty take over.
Sure. Good morning, everyone. Our fund balance as of the end of May was just over $10.8 million. It remains healthy. Our receivables are just shy of $998,000, but that is not atypical, given the volume of our transactions. So with that, there's nothing unusual to report there.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consolidated financial report for May 31, 2020? Motion. This is Tammy. Second? Second by Mayor Finan. Any discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Joan, I think pursuant to the new Open Meetings Act statute that passed June 2 and was signed, we actually have to take a roll call vote for every vote when we are doing electronic meetings.
Okay, because we hadn't done it before, but it's hard to keep up. But thank you. Let's, we could go back and vote on the others, but for this one, let's go ahead and have the clerk call the roll. Thank you, Deb.
Yes, thank you. Joan Dykstra?
Yes.
Diane Marlin?
Yes.
Katina Wiltshire?
Yes.
Charles Smith?
Yes.
Tammy Frilling bogus?
Yes.
Stephen Summers? Dennis Roberts?
Yes.
Deb Frank Finan?
Yes.
Patrick Brown?
Yeah.
All right.
All right, thank you, Pam. All right, next, we have the list of bills, and I'll let Betty also discuss that.
Sure. So the list of bills is typical for this period. It does reflect additional expenses related to direct client assistance, primarily including emergency shelter and utilities, energy assistance payments, and a significant number of workforce development training programs. So all charges are appropriate, and there is nothing unusual to report.
All right, to get it on the table, do I hear a motion to accept and place on file the list of bills for May 2020?
I'll move that we accept them. Dennis Roberts?
Chuck Smith, second.
All right. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none or hearing none, I'll have Pam call the roll.
Yes, thank you. Joan Dykstra?
Yes.
Diane Marlin?
Yes.
Katina Wiltshire?
Yes.
Charles Smith?
Yes.
Tammy Frilling bogus?
Yes.
Stephen Summers?
Yes.
Dennis Roberts?
Yes.
Deb Frank Finan?
Yes.
Patrick Brown? It's approved.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next, we get into number seven, the action item, fiscal year 20 budget amendment, LIHEP cares. Betty, would you like to discuss this before we?
So these funds, additional $500,000 is requested to add to our FY '20 budget. Under the LIHEP cares act, these funds were appropriated in response to the need surrounding the national emergency with the COVID for energy assistance. So these funds, these federal funds will be passed through the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. They can be used for any purpose normally authorized under the federal LIHEP statute, and that includes heating, cooling, crisis, weatherization assistance, the associated case management for the reduction of home energy burden, as well as some administrative costs. So we are delighted to have these supplemental funds because we expect additional need from our low-income compliance for LIHEP supplemental funding. So I request your approval of this amendment.
Thank you, Betty. Do I hear a motion to approve the fiscal year 20 budget amendment, LIHEP cares?
Chuck Smith, I make the motion.
Dennis Roberts seconds it.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Are there any questions for Betty? Hearing none, we'll have Pam call the roll.
Thank you. Joan Dykstra?
Yes.
Diane Marlin?
Yes.
Katina Wiltshire?
Yes.
Charles Smith?
Yes.
Tammy Frilling bogus?
Yes.
Stephen Summers?
Yes.
Dennis Roberts?
Yes.
Deb Frank Finan?
Yes.
Patrick Brown?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next, we have fiscal year 20 budget amendment, HSEHS cares. Betty?
Sure. So again, this budget amendment is in direct response to the receipt of one-time cares act funding to support our Head to Start children and families. The budget amendment is for both the Head Start and early Head Start portion in the amount of $507,000. In order to begin the recovery effort and begin to safely reopen our early childhood centers, there are a number of specific safety protocols that we need to put in place, including, you know, social distancing practices, barriers, sanitizing, training of the staff, as well as developing alternatives to our center-based programming. Given that we will be limited to eight to 10 children per classroom with two adults, we're going to need to develop other learning platforms for our low-income at-risk children. So this funding will help us. We have lots of flexibility with this one-time funding to design some creative, novel approaches to effective service delivery. So we're still in that process, and I request approval of this budget amendment.
Thank you, Betty. Do I hear a motion to approve the FY '20 budget amendment, Head Start EHS cares as presented?
Wiltshire, so moved.
Dennis, second was?
I was going to ask a question.
Oh, okay. So.
I was going to ask a question, not.
Okay, do we have a motion here?
Wiltshire moved.
Okay, and second was?
Chuck Smith.
Chuck Smith. Okay, now Dennis, yes.
Does this program also include food delivery service as an aspect of the early childhood centers operation?
So I'll let Brandy respond to that. We did get separate funding for a food program, which we're doing a drive-by food distribution. There is funding in here that is a portion of which is allocated to food, but we really have significant other funding from the USDA to enhance our food delivery.
And then my other question would be, since the early childcare and Head Start are limited in class size to 10 students, are you going to consider adding some portable units to the parking lot or something to allow more classrooms that are separated to take in more students? Is that one of the considerations that you've had to use the money, or are you going to just try to hold classes in other locations or at different times?
That's a great question, and we are having internal discussions about using remote-type classrooms. We're looking at leasing options as opposed to purchasing. We certainly have the location. Right now, the issue is, you know, working through all of the new requirements with DCFS, and they're stringent, of course, to make sure that, you know, we know what our centers can accommodate. But yes, our goal is to have as much center-based programming as we can because that's what our families would like. It is more structured for the children. It helps parents better prepare for the day and allows them to return to work or school. So yes, we are looking at all of those options. Right now, nothing definitive. We just received this award and the ability to begin to look at these appropriations and figure out how best to respond, given this COVID situation. We're hopeful that once we open up into the next phase that with the protective barriers in place, that perhaps we can expand the number of children in classrooms. But right now, this is very limiting, and the virtual platform is very difficult for our families because of technology issues primarily.
Yeah, I know. It's a concern. A lot of people would probably not be able to participate because of that. So. All right, well, I know it's a big job, and you're trying to figure it out, so good luck.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right. Do we have a motion to approve the fiscal year budget amendment, EHS extension cares?
I think we had that already, didn't we?
Sorry?
We did, yes.
Zooming can be hard to keep.
You took the vote on it.
Okay, I'll have Pam call the roll. Thank you.
Joan Dykstra?
Yes.
Diane Marlin?
Yes.
Katina Wiltshire?
Yes.
Charles Smith?
Yes.
Tammy Frilling bogus?
Yes.
Stephen Summers?
Yes.
Dennis Roberts?
Yes.
Deb Frank Finan?
Yes, sorry.
That's okay. Patrick Brown?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we have the safety policy for COVID-19, and I'll let Becky take over.
Thank you so much, and good morning, everybody. Included in your packet today are two proposed policies, the safety policy COVID-19 and the revised telework policy. I hope you've all had a chance to at least review it, and please feel free if you need those policies for your organizations to utilize them. As a result of the coronavirus pandemic, the RPC senior management team collaborated with the state's attorney's office and developed a safety policy COVID-19 and revised telework policy. The new policies identify the necessary guidelines to support a safe work environment during the global pandemic and provide staff with additional procedures for working from virtual offices. The safety policy COVID-19 was developed to establish guidance for employees related to this essential face coverings, of course, social distancing, hand washing, temperature-taking and testing while conducting business on behalf of RPC. The telework policy was revised to include procedures for employees while working on at virtual offices or completing work duties at remote work sites. The new policy provides additional details about duty stations, temporary work assignments, travel time, and the equipment inventory procedure. We are requesting approval of these two policies today. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, to get it on the table, do I hear a motion to approve the safety policy for COVID-19 as presented?
Mayor Smith, I recommend it. Make the motion.
Second, Wiltshire.
Thank you.
All right, discussion, questions for Becky? Feel free to go ahead. All right, hearing none, I'll have Pam call the roll.
Okay, am I calling the roll for each one separately, since there are two?
Well, I'm on D right now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Telework.
Okay. Joan Dykstra?
Yes.
Diane Marlin?
Yes.
Katina Wiltshire?
Yes.
Charles Smith?
Yes.
Tammy Frilling bogus?
Yes.
Stephen Summers?
Yes.
Dennis Roberts?
Yes.
Deb Frank Finan?
Yes.
Patrick Brown?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And now do I hear a motion to approve the safety policy, telework policy as presented?
So moved. Summers?
Second, Roberts?
All right, any discussion? All right, will Pam call the roll?
Thank you. Joan Dykstra?
Yes.
Diane Marlin?
Yes.
Katina Wiltshire?
Yes.
Charles Smith?
Yes.
Tammy Frilling bogus?
Yes.
Stephen Summers?
Yes.
Dennis Roberts?
Yes.
Deb Frank Finan?
Yes.
Patrick Brown?
Yes.
Thank you.
Pam, I want to go back to B and C. Do we, for the Head Start, do we have votes on both B and C? If I skipped one and kind of consolidated them?
On B and C, you say?
Do we have a motion and a vote on B and also C?
You know what? We skipped one.
Okay.
We skipped, we did the EHS extension cares, but not the HSEHS cares.
Okay, all right, let's go back to then. I guess it would be B?
Yes.
A motion back to B, a motion to approve the fiscal year 20 budget amendment for HSEHS cares as presented?
So moved.
All right, and a second?
Second, Mayor Smith.
All right, any discussion? Will Pam call the roll?
Joan Dykstra?
Yes.
Diane Marlin?
Yes.
Katina Wiltshire?
Yes.
Charles Smith?
Yes.
Tammy Frilling bogus?
Yes.
Stephen Summers?
Yes.
Dennis Roberts?
Yes.
Deb Frank Finan?
Yes.
Patrick Brown?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. All right, back on track, number eight, Head Start, early Head Start. Brandy?
Hi, good morning. The Early Childhood Division is currently working on reopening all five Head Start centers and implementing and practicing the prevention measures to maintain a safe and healthy environment for everyone. All staff returned on June 22 to the centers. Since early May, we've been providing virtual home visits through our home visiting program. The family childcare providers continue to provide childcare services as they have since March. The Department of Children and Family Services provided reopening guidelines on March, or on, sorry, May 29, which have been addressed in our reopening plan. We have since received two updates from DCFS and are currently updating our plans to reflect changes as of June 24. Our team also consulted with the Champaign-Urbana Public Health District on the exclusion policy for when staff and children are sick, as well as other safety precautions we will apply at the centers. Our team is also answering questions from staff and parents about reopening, addressing site-specific challenges, and assessing prevention measures daily. We are also developing a variety of ways to communicate with families about reopening and the safety requirements that will be in place upon their return. Center staff are creating videos on wearing masks, dropping off children at the centers, creating social stories for the children, and also participating in health checks. Families will also receive an updated parent handbook that includes the new prevention measures, as well as more information about COVID-19 and how to watch for symptoms. They will also receive an updated exclusion policy regarding the signs and symptoms and what would be the requirements for return if they are, if children are excluded. As you can imagine, we've got a lot to do. We continue to receive updates from CUPHD, IDPH, that's the Illinois Department of Public Health, and also the Office of Head Start. We hope to open our centers as soon as we can. We've projected sometime in June or July. That concludes my update. If you have any questions, I'm open to answering.
All right, to get it on the table, do I have a motion to accept and place on file the Head Start, early Head Start management reports, including financials and service area reports dated June 1, 2020? Is there a motion to approve?
Wiltshire moves.
Second?
Second, Mayor Smith.
All right, any discussion, questions for Brandy? All right, hearing none. Thank you, Brandy. Will Pam call the roll?
Yes. Joan Dykstra?
Yes.
Diane Marlin?
Yes.
Katina Wiltshire?
Yes.
Charles Smith?
Yes.
Tammy Frilling bogus?
Yes.
Stephen Summers?
Yes.
Dennis Roberts?
Yes.
Deb Frank Finan?
Yes.
Patrick Brown?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Next, we have program division updates. I'll let Betty go first.
Sure. So we're working to close out a number of our state grants that terminate on June 30. So the staff is busy working on that to make sure all the close-out reports are submitted. All the funds are obligated and expended within the 60- to 90-day period. We also have begun working on We also have begun working on the FY21 budget document. The budget begins on January 1st, but we generally begin working on that in the early summer. And next year, of course, with all the uncertainty, it makes budgeting a bit difficult, but we're working with the information that we do have. We just received a monitoring report from Illinois Department of Commerce related to our CSBG program. There was one fiscal finding related to the inability of the county to provide a bank reconciliation from the treasurer's office from December of 2019. We've submitted a written request to the treasurer to, you know, please respond to that finding and submit the required documents for both the bank statement and the reconciliation so that that finding can be addressed. We continue to negotiate with AFSMI. Those meetings are held once every week to, once every two weeks, so that continues with, along with the state's attorney's office. We had two very successful workforce job through job fairs that were drive-through. We had one in Champaign at our Mattis location at the Illinois Worknet Center two weeks ago. We had one yesterday afternoon in Tuscola, because Douglas County is now in our local workforce area. We had significant interest from companies in that area. We had lots of job seekers that came by getting interest. We are trying to promote the idea that if you're laid off and collecting unemployment, you could still participate in job training programs, and you could receive up to $16,100 in paid training to help you attain a new degree credential or, and work toward an in-demand career. So we were really pleased with the weather yesterday and the local turnout. So we're going to continue to do that, because despite the COVID, we have funding, and we believe there will be lots of job seekers that are interested in additional training as time, as time goes by. So that's all I have.
Any questions or comments for Betty? Hearing none, Becky Kruger?
All right, thanks again. So today, the human resources reports included in your packet represent personnel transactions from May 12 through June 8. During the reporting period, our management team hired seven new employees, 25 Work Investment Opportunity Act participants, and 27 summer youth students. RPC has a current employee count of 422, which includes 90 work experience participants. We are working diligently as a team to fill 19 open positions, which are very doable with our team. And honestly, the resources that we're using to aggressively recruit the most talented employees for our team, I have no doubt that we can get this done. The HR department has been, you know, diligently working with our management team to reopen the office, as well as return to the classroom. As many of you have mentioned through this conversation today, no easy task, but we're getting it done. I am also happy to announce that we are working on onboarding our new workforce development director. Dr. Justin Arnold will be joining us later in July, and he'll be moving to Champaign County, and we are very much looking forward to having him onboard. I'm sure you will meet him and hear more about Dr. Arnold here shortly. If I have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them today.
All right, are there any questions for Becky? All right, hearing none. Lisa, Community Services Director, Lisa?
Good morning. In your packet, I have included a report summarizing the work that's been done in our senior services program. Mayor Fuleen had asked for that. She had been a member of the Friends of Seniors and had seen that data regularly, so wanted to share this information with the group. Also, the LIHEAP program, we will be wrapping up this program year on June 30th, and the new program year will start July 27. Usually LIHEAP is a seasonal program that runs October through May, but with the pandemic, they extended the season, and then they'll be starting a new season in July. Usually with that program, they also have months that are designated months for target, target populations to receive service. As of July 27th, there will be no target populations. Anyone and everyone that meets the income eligibility will be able to apply as of July 27th. Also, related to the LIHEAP program, we are working with the Urbana Park District to secure, we have secured the Brookins Gym to begin, to use that, use that venue as of July 27th to allow for social distancing and safety precautions serving the number of individuals that we expect to come through as of July 27th. So Urbana Park District has been very accommodating and a great partner. We have secured the venue through August 31st, so we think that will be very helpful. With our typical ongoing year-round rent assistance program, we were able to secure an additional $60,000 just for the month of June, and actually have fully spent that $60,000 helping 50 households. So you can imagine the staff have been quite busy related to that. With our CSBG CARES grant that we received and actually implemented in May, we already have received 820 households expressing interest in those services or applying. There's a number of ways that they can seek services. At this point, we have received 49 full applications, and already 13 households have been served. The services are very individualized. We've talked a little bit about what are, you know, I've shared with you what's offered in the sense of rent, mortgage, water bill assistance, food, and then LIHEAP utility also. With that, we also have been doing a lot of outreach and making sure that the public is aware of those services. We do have ongoing TV ads. We've done radio spots. Yesterday, I was on the news briefing with Public Health and the mayors and shared the information. We are working closely with partners that would be able to spread the information. So those that are doing food distributions, providing information that they can then send out to those that are distributing food, will have the applications in the libraries. And then I also did a training or consultation with Land of Lincoln, who will be seeing, working, there's a group of lawyers that will be working with individuals that may face evictions or foreclosures. So very busy in trying to make sure that the public is aware of the assistance that we're providing, and we're, I feel, I feel blessed to the fact that our state grant was very quick and nimble in getting these services going. We see a lot of funding that's coming through the CARES Act, but they haven't necessarily implemented yet, and we actually have been very quick to get implemented. So I think that's, that's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Next, oh, I'm sorry, are there any questions for her, any comments?
I want to thank Lisa very much for the report. So I kind of miss having our regular meetings, and so I think this would be a good way to know what senior services are doing. So, thank you.
Thanks, Tammy. Next, Rita?
Good morning, everyone. As everyone else, we have been really busy dealing with the whole situation regarding COVID, dealing with public transportation in the rural areas. As I mentioned in the previous meeting, we have had some decrease in ridership for some kind of service, but a significant increase in ridership for the fixed route service. And we have been working diligently with MTD on providing more buses to be able to bring people to the places that they want to go. Regarding census, this is the update. As Wednesday, June 24, still the city of Champaign and the village of Rantoul, the two communities that have lower, the lowest response rate, even lower than the United States. Has been a 2% increase mostly for all the communities since May, but we are still behind, and I'm going to go into the details of the areas that needs more attention. As you can see here, the lowest responses are in northwest Urbana and northeast Champaign. These areas, in these areas, the responses are about 40%. And also on the campus areas, as you can see, we have census tracts where the response is only 25%. And these are areas where the majority of the people living there are students. Then we are working with the university to try to address the concerns that we have regarding the low response rate. The grant that we received from the Department of Human Services is ending on June 30th, but we applied for a second grant, because the census response was extended until the end of October. We received notification yesterday that that second grant was approved. And our intention is to continue working on outreach, promotion of the census. And these are some of the activities and planned events that we have. We applied for the grant. The grant was approved. It was $79,000. With that funding, we are ordering PPEs to restart our outreach in mid-July, hopefully. We have already coordinated with community services staff to do outreach and help people to complete their census form during the LIHEAP events that they will be having on the Brookins Gym. I also coordinated with the school district to do Latino outreach in August. And our hope is, as soon as the students are back on campus, to do door knocking on the different resident halls or apartments to make sure that the students fill out their census form. We are also hoping to have, to participate on the disability expo, if the disability expo comes to fruition on October 10. That will be basically the last big event that we'll have in this community that we can take advantage to make sure that people fill out their census application. We will work as much as we can to get people to fill out the questionnaire until October 31st. We are also ordering more materials, but I just want to let you know that we still have stand-up banners, the children books in Spanish and English, placemat, yard signs, reusable bags, several things that we have ordered to promote the census. Any questions regarding the census?
Joan, I have a question.
Yes.
Hi, this is Diane. That census tract, those two tracts in Urbana are, they include five dormitories and a bunch of sororities. And I assume this low response rate means the university hasn't submitted the, the basic counts yet? Is that correct?
They were working on submitting that information. I don't know if they have submitted that information yet. And if they have submitted the information, I don't know if the information has processed.
Is there a way to find out when that happens? Will they?
I can find out. We'll be having our complete count committee next month. Then at that time, they will inform us the status of all that. But even with that, they are able only to submit information regarding the registered resident halls. They cannot submit information for areas that are not resident halls.
Correct, but that's, yeah, that's thousands and thousands of students. So then my other question is, depending on what actually happens in the fall, I understand that they're reducing, you know, density in the dorms, so maybe one person to a room instead of two. Which numbers, I assume they have to use the numbers for April of this year?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so that won't have an impact.
Which will be a challenge, knocking on doors and asking students, where were you on October, on April 1st? Because that's the way that they have to respond to the questionnaire.
Good grief. Well, the university just has to do it. I mean, I...
For where, for the areas that they are allowed to do it.
Yes, absolutely.
But on the apartments, that will be a challenge.
Yes.
We are facing a lot of challenges with the census at this time.
No kidding.
Yeah, and we are doing the best that we can.
No, I, I know, I know. And north is, Lincoln Avenue is one north and one south, and many, many international students, so that remains a challenge too.
Yeah. Okay. Aside from that, staff have been working on several grants. I updated you last month on the grants that we work with different businesses. At this time, we are working on the Rebuilding Illinois Public Infrastructure Grants. Due date for submitting them is June 30th. We are preparing three different grants, one for the city of Urbana for registered reconstruction, one for the city of Hopstone for $1 million for building the public infrastructure for our commercial development on Hopstone, and for the village of Talonoa, a $5 million grant for updating the Talonoa wastewater treatment plan. Then we are working closely with staff from district communities to get those grants finalized. Hopefully today, that on Monday, we can mail them to DC or to have them there by Tuesday. Any questions? Okay.
All right, is there anything else for Rita or any of the other program divisions? Right, do I have a motion to accept and place on file the division updates for fiscal, human resources, community services, and planning and community development? Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion, Dennis Roberts.
Second, Summers.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll have Pam call the roll.
Thank you. Joan Dykstra?
Yes.
Diane Merlin?
Yes.
Katina Wiltshire?
Yes.
Charles Smith?
Yes.
Tammy Fuleen Bogus?
Yes.
Stephen Summers?
Yes.
Dennis Roberts?
Yes.
Deb Frank Finan?
Yes.
Patrick Brown?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next, we're on number 10, CEO Management Report, presented orally by Dr. Sulemojo.
Thank you, Chair, and members of the commission. Good morning. As you've heard from all the various departmental reports, we certainly have continued to provide services to our community, albeit in this very challenging environment, and as I'm sure your respective organizations have continued to do the same. Nonetheless, we do have some programs that have really been challenging to continue to operate in this sort of restricted environment prior to even when the governor started to reopen the state. One of those programs is the Young Adult Reentry Program, which was a three-year program that the RPC was funded in a competitive process by the U.S. Department of Labor. As you recall, we had applied for this funding as a way for us to supplement the work that we do through our workforce initiatives that we have been operating here for a number of years. And we felt that, given that this is a very vulnerable population, that the work we do through WEOWA certainly would be complemented with these additional resources from the U.S. Department of Labor. We were, as I think I reported a couple of years ago, one of about 40 organizations in the country to have been awarded these funds. We were funded to serve 188 young adults between the ages of 18 and 24. One of the things that we learned after we were awarded the funds is the fact that we were probably two out of the 41 that were new grantees in this type of work. And so we did proceed with hiring staff and began the process of building community partnerships with probation, with other entities in the community that work with the reentry population. And as we had really ramped up our efforts in enrolling individuals, putting them through the various benchmarks that we had agreed upon in the grant. putting them through the various benchmarks that we had agreed upon in the grant, as I said, 188 where the individuals were supposed to have served in the program and have them go through either training and certification, but with the ultimate goal of helping them gain employment. And so a lot of the work involved trying to remove barriers that these young individuals had to get gainful employment. And so when COVID-19 hit, obviously, the direct contact with the individuals we had enrolled in the program was now, we resorted to doing that over the phone. And I think as we assessed, based on the number of folks that we had enrolled by the time COVID-19 had hit and we, then the governor had ordered the stay-at-home order, we were somewhere around, I think, 90 individuals enrolled. Staff were continuing to receive referrals from probation and other entities. But in discussions with DOL, we had initially requested if there could be consideration for a no-cost extension because the grant itself, we were supposed to have everything done in terms of enrollment, attaining the various benchmarks that were in the grant by September 30 of 2020. When we had discussions with DOL to see, given the challenges that we've had with COVID-19 and so forth, if there would be consideration, not only to us but to other grantees, to extend the deadline of September 20th to perhaps even December. They were not in favor of that for a couple of reasons. First of all, the funds themselves, I think, have a lifespan. And so they felt that even if we were to extend it, you know, it would be, it would be challenging for them if we were not able to fully expand the funds. And those funds would have to be returned to the, to the U.S. Treasury. But also looking at where we were in terms of our numbers and the COVID-19 challenge, and then looking at between, I think, March and September, they were willing to allow us to continue. But our internal assessment, we felt that if we're not out there in the public because of these restrictions, it would be challenging for us to keep the participants that we had enrolled engaged, but also enroll additional participants fully. And so the options that we had were either we continue on the same path with hopefully being able to fulfill all of the requirements of the grant by September 30th, which would have been very challenging. Or the other option would be for us to terminate the grant early. And by doing so, it does several things for us. It doesn't put us in any kind of challenging situation. Let's say that if we continued to September and then we don't meet all of the requirements, DOL would then have maybe placed us on a, they have some kind of a portal for grantees that they have experienced challenges with. And that would have impacted us in the future for any efforts for us to acquire additional federal funds. And it could have even had an impact on some of our existing federal grants. And so we felt that, yes, we could have given it a shot. But at this point, that we would take the option of terminating the grant early, which would be by the end of this month. But then at the same time, we also wanted to make sure that the individuals we had enrolled in the program would not just be left out in the cold. And so we have enrolled all of those individuals, if not most of them, into our WEOWA program. And they will continue to receive the same services that they were when they were in the Young Adult Reentry Program. We will continue to have this as a focus of our WEOWA program. As a matter of fact, as effective July 1st, we will have received an increase in additional funding for our WEOWA program at the tune of $1.1 million. We feel that by moving the participants into this program, it's more stable. The funding is more permanent. It's not, it's not temporary, as in the case of the YARP. And that will allow our staff to do everything they can to ensure that the individuals that we're serving, that are in the reentry category that we're serving in our WEOWA program, will indeed have opportunities to get gainful employment in our community. So I wanted to, to bring that to your attention. It's not really, I mean, I understand that it's, it's a, it's a program that we're not going to have any longer. But in terms of the participants and in terms of the resources, we're still getting additional resources to serve that population. It's just that these funds, based on the requirements that DOL had, we just felt that we didn't want to take the risk of continuing on till September 30th. And then, you know, if we wouldn't meet any of those requirements, then that would have other repercussions on the RPC that would be unintended. I'd be glad to take any questions, my dear chair.
Questions for Delitzo. All right. Hearing none. Thank you, Delitzo. All right. Next, is there any old business? Hearing none. Let's get into the new business. I need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to 5 Illinois compiled statute 120 to C1 to consider the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, or performance of specific employees of the Champaign County Regional Planning Commission. Is there a motion to approve?
Don't move, Diane.
Second, Mayor Smith.
Great. Any discussion?
I just have a question. When we do these in Champaign, we actually leave and have a separate Zoom link so we can be sure that no members of the public, since this was a published link. I don't know, are we planning on just staying on for this one? I didn't see a second link.
Jason, are you still there?
I believe he's left.
No, he's here.
Oh, okay.
And is there any chance that when he goes, that there is an ability for someone else to be stalking or hulking in the background? Is that possible?
I'm monitoring the situation. And if there is anyone joining, I can remove that person from the meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Rita. Thank you, Deb, for that caution.
I just need to know from the staff who needs to be part of the closed session.
All right. Let's, for the purposes of the minutes, who is allowed to remain? Pam or Delitzo?
Pam, myself, Brandy, Becky, and Betty. Rita will stay on just to monitor the Zoom.
And Lisa is the only staff that is not allowed to be part of the meeting. Okay.
All right. So hearing that discussion, will Pam call the roll?
Yes. I'm going to call Betty as I have been. Joan Dykstra.
Yes.
Diane Marlin.
Here. Or yes, sorry.
Katina Wiltshire.
Yes.
Charles Smith.
Yes.
Tammy Frueling Bogus.
Yes.
Stephen Summers.
Yes.
Dennis Roberts.
Yes.
Deb Frank Finan.
Yes.
Patrick Brown.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. At this point, we will go into closed session and we'll wait for a minute to have people exit who need to.